Roll call, please.
Counselperson White. Counselperson Perez. Counselperson Maples. Counselperson Gill. Here. Counselperson Hawkins.
Here.
Counselperson President Stavney.
Here.
Counselperson Owen.
Here.
Counselperson Ellis.
Here.
Counselperson Samuel.
Here.
Let the records reflect all nine members of presence.
Let me first say, please everybody turn their mics on because there's been complaints so people can't hear when we speak from the audience and people taking notes. Please turn your mics on. With that, first up is minutes for workshop of August 19.
I have a clarification. On page two, it is one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh line down, when we were talking about the safety position, Heather, this will be for you to clarify. The safety position is going to change from 50/50 with wastewater 80/20. I thought it was reversed. I thought we're already 80/20 and we're going 50/50.
We're at 50/50 now.
Okay. And I'll take the motion to approve.
Second. Motion second to approve the minutes of workshop from August 19. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, next up, minutes from the regular meeting of August 19. The motion is second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Those opposed? Next up, approval of the agenda. Motion to approve. Yeah, motion second to approve the agenda as submitted. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Those opposed? Next up, claims to be approved.
We have civil city claims tonight for $442,863.38.
All claims in order?
Yes.
I did, there were some that didn't have POs and I already, I got them done for you.
So they're already in the claims. So nobody has any questions.
All the other claims are in order. I'll make a motion to approve the civil city claims of $442,863.38.
Second. The motion second to approve the civil claims. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Those opposed? Next up, parks claims.
I have one change. Yes, on page two, the very last one for $273.58 needs to be removed.
We're going to check, see if that could be an insurance claim. Think he's going to look it over. If not, then it'll be back on. But it's involved in a broken window, so.
The total now is $461,000.
$273.
$81.84.
All the claim, other claims I had questions on, need things in order?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to approve the claim amount for 461, $81.84.
Second. The motion second to approve the parks claims. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Those opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Next up, report of the clerk.
Yes, the only thing I want to mention on that claim, I haven't gotten the information yet. It would be the police report and the invoice in order to submit.
You need to send out another email on that, let me know if you don't get it.
Is that it? All right, next up, unfinished business. Ms. Metcalf, an ordinance transferring certain funds within the same district is passed on first and second reading. It's 2019 OR 42.
Any changes?
No.
Motion to approve 2019 OR 42 in the third and final.
Second. The motion second to approve 2019 OR 42 in the third and final reading. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Those opposed? You're up again. This is a public hearing for 2019 OR 43 passed on first and second reading.
There's no changes.
No changes. This is a public hearing regarding the additional appropriation 2019 OR 43. Is there anyone here to speak for or against regarding this issue? Anyone? Seeing no one, we're going to go ahead and close public hearing. Second. The motion second to approve 2019 OR 43 in the third and final reading. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Those opposed? Next up, new business. Item number 11. Ms. Gill.
Yes, I asked Pastor Noon to come back and give us an update on all the wonderful things that they've done to assist all those with America's Best. I'll turn it over to you.
I want to pass out some information which I think will be important to you all. I believe there are 10 of these. And I, there's going to be a couple of things. I'll let you see that one first. I would consider this to be the receipt for the money that you paid. And each column of this actual worksheet, you'll see, the first column you'll see is a family number. And you'll start with the manila or the ivory color. You'll see a family number. Then you'll see, we've deleted some of the information, so it's not put people's personal or private information out into public space. But what you will see is a family number, the sex, the age of the person, if they go to Clarksville, where did they end up? And then a dollar amount is attached per family. And so it'll tell you exactly how much money we spent per family all the way down. And the actual ivory color is the people who are actually residents at America's Best. If you go to the second sheet, what you'll see is others that we were able to help in the community. Some of these were residents at the Haven House. You'll see some information there in the same order that I've mentioned to you earlier. So in order to kind of get a better glimpse of what we're talking about, I actually prepared two other documents to kind of give you an overview. So that's all the information, then there's some specifics that I think are very helpful. First of all is a pie chart that I made that basically tells, okay, where, when we process these individuals from America's Best or the other people in the community, where did we put them? That seems to be a big question that people have in the back of their minds, where did they end up? So there's a pie chart here to tell you where the people that processed at America's Best ended up in our communities. And I'll let you look at that. The final document that's before you is a white piece of paper that actually says and states data snapshot at the top of the paper. This is some information I think is important for public record. We began with 159 people at America's Best, were able to help 138 people at America's Best, and we spent approximately $44,684.12. Forty-six families found permanent housing with those dollars. We found that 10 people were able to find shelter under their own volition. We were unable to help about 11 people due to lack of income, substance abuse issues, or some kind of sex trafficking concern. It could have been any of those. After processing those at America's Best, we began to process other people who asked us for help. Some of them are from the Haven House. We were able to process 56 additional people at about $8,998. It represents about 24 families. Of those people we processed, we were unable to help eight due to lack of income, substance abuse, or sex trafficking concerns. We have found permanent housing for 194 people, which represents 70 families, for $53,682.12. And I'll make a note that there are 77 children represented in that number. We're continuing to assist families with remaining $14,317.88 of the approximately $68,000 that we have raised. And one of the things I'll add, and it's not for you all, but for people that are the viewership outside of this room, because we've got, I've been inundated with calls about, when are you going to come to the meeting? When are you going to provide the data? We took, we did all this in about eight weeks. And that pressure is an extremely high amount of pressure to get this many people processed, to find and locate the landlords that are willing to accept these people, and also to work with their individualized issues that they represent. So we did it in the best time. And if I ever say that I'm going to provide you with documented evidence, I will back that up. I'm not going to not give you what I promised to you all. Any questions about that?
I will stop you and say how remarkable that is. It's fantastic. I mean, hats off to you.
It's not me, because there's other people. If you are on the homeless task force, there's a couple of people here tonight. And we, you know, there's 11 organizations represented that came together, put off their own agendas, donated their time to make this happen. It is pretty remarkable, the number of people that decided, and we got to know the people's stories. We knew them by name. You know, we know who has substance abuse issues. We know who's potentially being trafficked. We know their kids, you know? Some of their kids played with my kids. I mean, it's, it wasn't just, we threw them in a few houses. That's just not possible. You have to get to know the people in order to make this kind of stuff occur. Any questions about any of that?
No, thank you so much.
No, and extend the thanks to those that aren't here. And especially, y'all did a remarkable job of getting all the different agencies involved in the housing authority. I mean, remarkable. It's amazing what you all have done.
We're going to continue to be together as a group. And we don't, I'm not foreseeing any additional funds in the future at this time, but, you know, up and coming is something that several of us have talked about individually with council people is that processing people in the Haven House and other people who are couch surfing or in these hotel motels this way keeps people off of the street. And it keeps them from becoming the issues in our emergency rooms and in our police departments and so on and so forth. And that's kind of our goal, is the homeless prevention task force, to make sure they can get that permanent housing if it does exist. So, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, I'm off to Clarksville. Thank you.
Do you have copies of everything?
Next up, item 12. Mr. Merkley, a public hearing for 2019 OR 44. An ordinance changing zoning designation.
This is a reference to property located at 2005 Woodland Court. It comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the planning commission to zone this property from institutional IS to residential R3, which is actually old city residential. I don't know if there's a member or a representative of the applicant, which is Rodelio Gomez Ruggel and Mrs. Hallerendra Perez. I don't know if there's someone here to represent them, but they're here. They're here if you have any questions. This is a public hearing. And again, it was a favorable recommendation from the planning commission.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for 2019 OR 44 regarding the changing of zoning at 20, is it 2005 or 2?
According to the application, it's 2005.
2005, Woodland Court. Anyone here to speak regarding this issue, this rezoning? Seeing no one, we're going to go ahead and close public hearing.
This is in my district. I went by there, and I have not received any phone calls or complaints about it, so I'm in full support. I'll make a motion to approve 2019 OR 44.
Second. The motion is second to approve 2019 OR 44. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes. Thank you. Mr. Merkley, you're still up. Another public hearing regarding 2019 OR 45. Another zoning change. Is that correct?
Yes, this is a rezoning of property located in 9270 Indiana Avenue. That property would be rezoned from C2 to C1, so it would remain commercial. The C2 is a medium to large sale, general commercial, so this is actually a downsize to a C1, small to medium scale general commercial. Again, a favorable recommendation from the planning commission on this application. And it was filed by Hogan Property Development, and they're here. If you have any questions or need more information regarding this, this is part of the 10th Street Gateway Development Project.
Great. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against regarding 2019 OR 45? Zoning change at 9270 Indiana Avenue. Anyone here to speak?
This is actually, I think, a new parcel that was acquired. So it's being rezoned to be consistent with the rest of the development.
This is a public hearing. Anyone here to speak regarding this? Seeing no one, we're going to go ahead and close public hearing. Motion to approve. Second. The motion is second to pass 2019 OR 45. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Those opposed? Passes. Mr. Merkley, you're on a roll. 2019 OR 46, another zoning change.
Yes, this is a favorable recommendation on this application as well from the planning commission for property located in the 700 block. In fact, the next two items are in reference to the same area. The first one is the 700 block of West Riverside Drive. For that property to be zoned from C1 to downtown commercial, again, a favorable recommendation from the planning commission. The applicant is KJ Development Incorporated, which is Mr. Wes Johnson. This is the area where Rockies is located at. We do, Mr. Johnson and his representatives are here. If you'd like more information along with Mr. Applegate, but again, this was a favorable recommendation to rezone this property to be consistent with the proposed use.
All right, this is also a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak regarding 2019 OR 40, what do we, 46? Rezoning at 700 block of West Riverside Drive? Anyone here to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, we're going to go ahead and close public hearing. Any discussion?
I have a question. What's going to be the future use? Do we know? Is it housing?
Yes, residential.
Oh, residential.
Residential multifamily, yes.
Representatives from the Harbors were at the meeting, and they're, they've seen the plans. They talked with the developer. Everyone is in agreement, likes the project.
Yeah, I don't believe anyone appeared at the planning commission to object.
I'll make a motion to pass 2019 OR 46.
Second. The motion is second to pass 2019 OR 46. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes. And Mr. Merkley, 2019 OR 47, an ordinance changing zoning at, zoning designation at 715 Riverside Drive.
This is part of the same proposed development or project along Riverside Drive, except this would be a separate parcel from the one that was just rezoned, different. It would be 715 West Riverside Drive. This would be rezoned from C1 to M2 to allow multifamily. Again, the applicant is KJ Development Incorporated, Wes Johnson Jr. Their representatives from, the petitioner is here along with their attorney, if you have any questions. But again, this was a favorable recommendation from the planning commission. And no one, I don't believe anyone appeared to oppose.
This is a public hearing for 2019 OR 47, rezoning at 715 Riverside Drive. Is anyone here to speak for or against regarding this rezon? Anyone here to speak? Seeing no one, we're going to go ahead and close public hearing. Motion second to pass 2019 OR 47. Any other discussion?
I have a quick question. How many units are going to go there? Do we know?
130. That's the proposed. There's still a lot more work to be done on the project, but I think the petitioner wanted to get the rezoning out of the way before they started making a significant investment in beginning the project.
Are they going to be condos or apartments? Do we know?
My understanding are going to be apartments.
So there will be parking available for that many residents?
Yes, yes. Although those are some of the details that'll still have to be worked out when we get to the development planning stage.
All right, so we have a motion second for 2019 OR 47. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next up, item number 16. Matt Owen.
This is a resolution authorizing the investment deduction within the Jeffersonville UEZ. This is something that the council has considered previously under the application from the UEZ. Person that, the developer that bought this property asked if he could come and request this, because he felt like he had reason to come and provide documentation as to why we should go ahead and approve this. As far as I am aware, I believe this is a, what would we call it? By right application, but it's in a TIF district, so we have to, this body would have to approve those tax credits if, because it's in a TIF district. So I don't know. Alan Munsey is here with ARC, if you'd like to come up.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Alan Munsey, president of ARC. And we are the owners of the property located at Spring and Market in downtown Jeffersonville. This property was purchased from the Urban Enterprise, sorry, Urban Enterprise Association through a development agreement that was executed last year. As part of that development agreement, we had some approvals that we had to go through with regards to UEA, with regards to the historical board, with regards to BZA and planning commission. All of those approvals were met and approved with each one of those organizations, and we proceeded towards closing. This particular project, I believe, was initially brought by the Urban Enterprise Association to the city council a few months back. I don't recall the exact date. But what I'd like to do, if I could, is give you a little bit of background. I know many of you are familiar with the project. Some of you may not be. So I want to give you a little background. About a year and a half ago, the Urban Enterprise Association approached us and several other developers with their desire to develop the property at the corner of Spring and Market Street to see some continued growth here in the city of Jeffersonville. An RFP was issued, and we were a respondent to that RFP. I believe that we may have been the only respondent to the RFP at that time. And as a respondent to the RFP, the UEA accepted our proposal, and we entered into a contract. The requirements of that contract were to provide a project that was going to benefit the city of Jeffersonville and the residents downtown and as a whole. I believe we met that through the development and design of a 22-unit multi-use residential development that also included roughly 9,000 square foot of retail. The retail encompasses a restaurant, coffee shop, and bank, which are all local businesses. So upon the development plan of that project, we submitted to the UEA. UEA approved it, as I said, went through historical board and all of the other approvals. And there is an investment credit that is, as Councilman Owen said, a by right use to this. But because the Urban Enterprise Association overlaps a TIF district, we had to come to the city council to ask for approval of that credit. So that credit, I say a credit, it's an investment credit. It's based on the investment that we're making, would be used to help the project be more affordable. So when we have residential or commercial housing, and we're developing properties, those tax savings, any taxes that we're not paying get passed along towards the, to the residents or the tenants of the project. So by receiving this investment credit, we're able to make the taxes lower for the tenants that are going to occupy this building and try to build a little bit nicer, a little bit nicer project for the city of Jeffersonville. So previously, I believe that this was voted down, and I think some of the concerns at the previous meeting for the reason it was voted down, according to the minutes of the meeting, had to do with some of the lack of transparency with the Urban Enterprise Association previously. From my understanding, there's been some changes within the Urban Enterprise Association with regard to that transparency or those members that were previously on the UEA that some of the members here at council may have had concerns with. We would like to try to provide any information we can that would make the council more comfortable with this project and understand how those, how those funds are going to be used to benefit the city of Jeffersonville. We'd also like to answer any questions with regard to any concerns that the council has. You know, I think it's important to note that the city of Jeffersonville, city council actually appoints four members to that UEA board. The mayor actually appoints six members to that UEA board. So 10 of the 12 members of that UEA board are being appointed by the city and the mayor's office. So I think if there's any concerns with regards to transparency, hopefully that the city and the mayor's office can help to try to answer any of those questions. I think it's important to note, too, that the UEA acquired a portion of this property from redevelopment a while back with regards to a previous developer's interest in the property. The former Tubby's property that was there was owned by, I believe, Public Works and was, was beaded over to UEA by the RDC with regards to development of the property, with the intent of that property being developed. And there was actually a resolution that was adopted when that property was beaded over that requires the UEA to redevelop that property for its intended use as redevelopment downtown and similar to other projects that have been done downtown, no later than 2022. So there's actually a requirement of the UEA to redevelop that property that was put onto them by redevelopment. So, you know, we believe that we're meeting the intent of the development agreement that we executed with the UEA. We believe that this investment credit will benefit the city of Jefferson. We believe that this project will benefit the city of Jeffersonville. And we permitted or completed several other projects within the city. The Town Place Suites, our office building, Town Town, most recently Colston Park, has opened, and we're getting a huge amount of interest. We've already sold three units, have four others under contract in the 30-unit development within the first several weeks of releasing the project to the public. So we've also received an investment credit on a previous project, the Marriott Town Place Suites project, that I believe has shown that we do intend to invest well in the city of Jeffersonville. So with that being said, are there any questions from the council with regard to this project that I can try to answer?
I'm just curious, what is your investment going to be in this property?
Uh, $3.5 million.
$3.5 million.
Yes, sir, $3.5 million is our investment in this property. And if I could add to, there's also, I believe that there were a few comments with regards to a dollar purchase price on this property. Well, as part of our due diligence on this property, we were aware that there were some subsoil conditions that were of concern. We received independent bids and provided those to the UEA. There's about $200,000 worth of subsoil conditions that have to be rectified by our company. And we only asked the UEA to contribute up to $40,000 in regards to that. So in essence, we're paying $160,000 for the property upfront before we ever even start to develop it, not including all of the due diligence, the planning, the design that we put into the project before we actually start construction. The $3.5 million is the construction cost. I think it's important to note, and another reason why we're here, like I said earlier, is we are in an urban enterprise zone, and it overlaps a TIF district. So we have to come to city council to ask for this investment credit. The investment credit is there for the reason of taking distressed properties, low-income properties, properties in areas such as downtown for redevelopment. It is meant to incentivize redevelopment. It's meant to acquire or find developers like us to come in and spend their money downtown, to enhance downtown, to enhance the value, to enhance the tax base. This property, I'm 48 years old. I'm born and raised in Jeffersonville. I never remember this corner having anything on it. I'm not talking about the small portion of Tubby's. The balance of the corner, I never remember anything on this corner. Those tax dollars have never come to the city of Jeffersonville from a building or a development on there, other than a portion of it that was Tubby's. We're going to build a $3.5 million investment. I think that the projects we've done in downtown speak for themselves, to the point that, Jason, if you can show this real quick. If I can show you all just a quick video. So this is a snapshot of the most recent marketing video put out by the city of Jeffersonville and Mayor Mike Moore. Is there, there's no sound with it, but that's okay. It's not. So this video here is highlighting, this video highlights all of the projects we've done downtown. It highlights the live-work-play concept that we added on the building that we redeveloped downtown and advertises Jeffersonville using our projects and using our tagline. So if we haven't made a positive impact on the city of Jeffersonville, I'm not sure what else to do. And this is going to be another project that you can add to another video that's going to sell the lifestyle in Jeffersonville. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I'm just going to ask you. Is there any, there's no difference in the proposals, Alan, from the first one to this? It's the same? Nothing's changed?
As far, I don't understand what proposal.
The project.
The project. The project. What we voted on the last time, there's no difference, and nothing's changed, terms or anything?
No, no, no terms have changed. If I can ask, is there any terms that you're concerned with? Because we executed a contract with the Urban Enterprise, a mutually agreed upon contract with the Urban Enterprise Association.
Any other questions? With that, I guess, if there's no more questions, I guess, is there any motions to be entertained?
Is there a resolution number?
Ten.
Make a motion. Oh, I don't know. Is there a public comment?
I don't think so.
But is there any?
Go ahead and find out.
So there are people here to speak for, other than most of you? Is there anyone else? Public comment? Go ahead and pass that up here. Thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else who's, as is tradition, when a topic comes up and there's somebody signed up for that, to have a public comment about that topic? If there's anyone here to speak on this, I guess, Alan, you already spoke. Mark Miller is part of your group, is that right? And Jason, is that part of your group? All right. And, is there anyone else? Chris Palmer? All right, come on up, Mr. Palmer. All right, come on up, Mr. Palmer. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much, council members, how are you all this evening? Guys, I am a business owner in downtown Jeffersonville. I own a property known as the Alcove down there. Myself, I'm also a resident of the Franklin Commons Historic District.
Mr. Palmer, we need your name and address for the record, please.
617 East Maple Street, Jeffersonville, Indiana 47130. My name is Christopher Wade Palmer. I'm actually speaking to endorse this project. I have been working and living in Jeffersonville for six years now. At one point, worked at Mash Cigar Bar, was a shareholder in the now defunct Vinyl Lounge over Roches, and am a owner, a partial owner of the Alcove. I'll be opening my second business down on Spring Street in the next three months in the former Two Tire Coffee Shop. I'm from Bowling Green, Kentucky originally. My father was a city council member there for 16 years. He was a member of the Census Bureau there for 20. I've watched a lot of economic development come to the city. We're in the middle of a great boom right now. I have a hard time understanding why, in the downtown area, which we have chosen as an arts and entertainment district, we're turning down any opportunities for investment. Cities don't often get an opportunity to grow like we do, like we have before us. And I'd like to say that these gentlemen have done more than their fair share to prove that they have positive investments for the future of Jeffersonville. And I think that it would be nice to see a lot of other residents in the area, business owners and residents alike, try to endorse some growth while we have the opportunity to have it. If you all have any questions for me, you're more than welcome to ask, but I just want to come this evening as a business owner and give them my, my faith. So, thank you.
Thank you. John, John Ashton? Name and address, please.
John Ashton, 54 Virginia Drive, Jeffersonville, Indiana. Also here to speak on behalf of the development. ARC has done a great job in developing downtown Jeffersonville, but also, you know, I believe it's upon the city to fulfill their obligations on redeveloping this property. I know that there's been some, some back and forth about the, the design and whatnot, but I mean, it's a pretty tight needle that they have to thread to meet all the minimum requirements while staying within the limitations of what they're allowed to do on that property. And this development does all of those things. You know, to me, it's a question of, you know, whether or not downtown Jeffersonville is going to be open for redevelopment and bringing in new business and new, new construction like this or not. You know, if this is held up, I don't know why any other developer would look at coming down here. I mean, I know other developers looked at this site before and said it wasn't profitable enough. Mr. Muncy just said that they were one of the only ones to actually bid on developing the property. I think this is a great opportunity for the city to find a willing partner to move forward and have a successful venture for everybody involved. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And there's no one else here to speak for this, so with that, is there any other, any other questions or comments from the council?
Make a motion to approve 19R10.
Second. We have a motion second to pass 2019R10. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, since we already voted on this once before, so with that, roll call vote, please.
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Paris?
No.
Councilperson Maples?
Yes.
Councilperson Gill?
No.
Councilperson Hawkins?
No.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Samuel?
No.
Councilperson Ellis?
No.
Council President Stodden?
Yes.
Five nos, four yeses.
Did not pass?
So, I'll pass this one.
All right. All right, next up, number 17, Mr. Merkley, 2019R11. A resolution approving amendment.
You have in front of you a resolution approving amendment to, to an interlocal agreement that previously has been approved by various entities, including the Redevelopment Commission and the city council as required by state law. This is in reference to a project that has been going on for, not a project has been going on, but a project has been discussed for a few years now. The original agreement is dated back on October 20th, 2015, in reference to what we commonly call as the Heavy Hall Road. After many, many discussions and negotiations between the various parties, that being the Redevelopment Commission and the Port Commission and River Ridge, the parties have reached an agreement to amend the agreement so that the project or the road can be finally moved forward and construction to start soon. There are various amendments, I would just hit the highlighted ones that are probably the most important to you as the fiscal body. But again, this has been approved by the Redevelopment Commission. Calls for an additional $4 million for the Heavy Hall Road project to be constructed, with $3 million of that additional funding to come from the state, that being the Indiana Department of Transportation, and then the other million dollars to come from the city of Jeffersonville Redevelopment Commission to be paid out of TIFs in this area that is along the Heavy Hall Road, that in fact are very limited what we can use those TIF dollars for, unless it's for that specific area for those projects. It would be Vote Valve, Galveston, those two TIFs, Vote Valve and Gas, Galveston. Heather will state and agree that there are sufficient funds out of those two TIFs to meet that requirement of additional million dollars. Also, as part of this amendment to the interlocal agreement, the city or the Redevelopment Commission would not be responsible for maintaining the road, which, which is a significant benefit to the city, obviously, from the standpoint of our budget for, for streets and roads. So that would not be the responsibility of the city, but the city also would help mitigate with some wetlands in the area. So those are the highlights of the, of the agreement. Again, it's, this agreement is primarily with the Redevelopment Commission, since that's where the money is coming from, but by state law, it also requires for the city council to sign off on this and the mayor. And I felt that was necessary additionally because the original agreement the city council approved as well. So I will do my best to answer any questions. I have not been that involved in these negotiations, but Rob Wayes, the Redevelopment Director, has.
I'm just thrilled the responsibility of maintenance has been taken off of us. That is a huge win for us. Is this resolution number 11? Yes, please. Do you need a public hearing, please? Is there anybody that's stuck? Please discuss.
Nope.
Motion to approve 19R11.
Second.
Motion second to approve 2019R11. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? All right, that passes.
Mr. President, there's two spots to be used.
Well, I have a question on that. I know there's been discussion in the past about who controlled speed and violations on roads like this, Port Road being one of them, that Jeff, city Jeff would point at the county and county would point at the port authority. Is this another one of those roads that we need?
If they, if, I'm not, I cannot answer definitive that question.
Only game I ever have.
Well, Port, the Port, we do not control the speed limit.
So the Port Road is?
The Port is, is owned by the state of Indiana or the Port Commission, so we do not control the speed limit, nor do we control the intersection at Middle Road and Port. The city would like to have a stoplight there or a signal, and state controls that, and right now is hesitant to do that. I'm assu, I can't, don't hold me to this, I'm assuming that if they're going to be maintaining this road, that this portion of the Heavy Hall Road would be very similar to, they would control. Just keep in mind that-
It's just tough for a city sometimes to respond to complaints of speed and things like that when you don't control the road.
Yeah, obviously, our, our big concern from maintaining it was, I mean, you're going to have very, very heavy-
Oh, yeah, I understand that aspect.
Industrial trucks.
I'm excited to start getting complaints about enforcement issues.
I, I do, yeah.
All right, next up is Mr. Merkley again, number, item 18. It'll be a public hearing regarding 2019OR48.
This is also an amendment to our zoning code. The planning commission sends this to you again with a favorable recommendation, I believe it's unanimous. Chad from the Department of Planning and Zoning here is to outline this, but basically we are updating our sign ordinance to comply with a recent US Supreme Court case that basically says that all sign ordinances and the enforcement of sign ordinances must be content neutral. So whatever we do on signs, we need to be content neutral. That's what this ordinance does, it brings us in, in compliance with, that's US Supreme Court case. Although our sign ordinance was not as bad as some, but it, it did need to be updated. Chad is here, if you have any more questions regarding it, but that's, that's basically what we're doing.
So no other changes other than for compliance purposes?
For compliance with, with, with the Supreme Court case. You might correct Chad, if all we're doing in this is complying.
No.
Well, I'll let him, my concern is to comply with the Supreme Court, I know. I'll let him talk later about this.
To answer your question, I wouldn't say that there's no other changes. We've streamlined a few things in the ordinance. We've clarified a few things in the ordinance that we've had issues with as we've been doing sign permitting over the last couple of years. By and large, the code hasn't changed. You know, we've corrected a lot of typos and formatting kind of issues as well in the, in the code. I'm trying to think if there was anything, I suppose one of the, two of the bigger changes, I'll just point out, we had the same sign code for multifamily residential as we had for single-family residential, so we've split those two out. And then we had different sign codes for each of our commercial developments, and they were so close to each other that we felt it was probably sensible to just kind of combine some of those two, some of those together, so that there were fewer classifications of signs that we were ultimately regulating.
Question, like the LED signs, there's no changes with those?
No.
So if you have LED signs, it can only change, what, once an hour or something?
Correct.
So it can't scroll and flash?
Yes, we have not changed any of the regulations regarding LEDs.
Any, any changes on billboards?
Nope.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody? Oh, thank you for reminding me. This is a public hearing, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public. So anyone here to speak for, against, or regarding 2019OR48, an ordinance amending the zoning code sign ordinance? Anyone here to speak? Seeing no one, we're going to go ahead and close public hearing.
I'll make a motion to pass 2019OR48, on the first and second.
So it's a one and done, right?
Oh, one and done, on the one and done.
Is there a second? Yep, we have motion second to pass 2019OR48. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, those against? All right. Thank you. Next up, number 19, Ms. Metcalf. I guess it'd be OR49, additional appropriation.
Do you want to do the additional or the transfer first? I think it was both.
It's, well, transfers first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just saw that. It's a state transfer, not a dis-
Okay.
Transfer for vehicle maintenance. Yes, if you have any questions, Michael Bryan is here to discuss them, but he has a position available under diesel mechanic. So instead of hiring someone for that position now, he's requesting to have those funds transferred. Does what the two, in parts of training and transfer out for fuel to go into motor equipment supplies, and then I also have another transfer for sanitation for other supplies.
Is this, is this thing diesel mechanic in the budget for next year?
No, this is the one that's taken out and replaced by administrative assistant.
Mr. Bryan, would you like to come in up?
Sure.
So the administrative position that you want to add for next year?
Yes.
Has that gone through HR and been put into the, we haven't seen a-
Job description.
Well, we haven't seen the salary ordinance at all for next year. So what does that look like? What, what pay range do you have that person in?
That will be in administrative two range, which is, I believe, salary range four, I believe. And that description is being made right now because it's not only going to be an administrative assistant, but also inventory control. That will be their two roles for that person, and that will fill in the, as I said, the pay level four, I believe that's correct. But that is to be worked out and then posted by the end of the year to be filled for first year.
And you're, I'm asking these questions now just because you're here, but you're, you're satisfied that you're not going to need, your department doesn't need another diesel mechanic, the city doesn't need-
That's correct.
I mean, I think we added this person because you had somebody that was going to work primarily with the fire department on large apparatus.
Right.
So this was added at the request of your predecessor.
Okay. I'm not sure about the history of, of why this position is open.
Right.
I do know that the position of the, of the body shop person, personnel, has also filled into the diesel mechanic role, so he does a dual role.
Okay.
So anytime there's body work to be done, that's his first priority.
Right.
If he has no body work to be done, then he is, he falls into that diesel mechanic position. So I think that's why we're picking up slack, if you will, on diesel mechanic.
And is that, is that something that would be easy to duplicate if we wanted to cross-train other people to do those types of things?
Yes, yes.
I don't know with all that-
And that's what I'm trying to do, is to try to make sure everyone's cross-trained, not only just in diesel mechanic positions, but should Eric be out, those people that are qualified in, in fire mechanics, what have you, to cross-train. And that's what Matt Marks, who is my, who is strictly my body shop guy, requested to go into diesel mechanic as well, and some kind of cross-training, he had to do both as well. And vice versa, I have some mechanics that are actually doing some, some body shop, you know, as needed.
Gotcha.
Is this, what is this vehicle?
The vehicle is to replace the 1999 Dodge vehicle that we service on-call for any vehicles that go down within the city, and that's, that's to replace it.
So it's a pool car?
Pardon?
Is it a pool car?
It's, it's, at the time, currently, it was, it was a take-home vehicle by one of the mechanics. I'm going to alleviate that, and it will be a vehicle that's stationary there at the shop.
Has it been purchased?
Not yet.
Transfer's not going to be-
Have to wait for the transfer.
Well, this is a transfer, which I, there's no other questions. I'll make a motion to pass 2019OR49, first and again.
Motion second to pass 2019OR49, the first and second reading?
That's correct.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed?
Thank you.
Ms. Metcalf, you're here again.
I have additional appropriation requests. The first three are for accrued benefits for our safety managers. Acquired time that's, now that they're leaving, then we'll have to pay that out. And then we have vehicle maintenance is asking for $10,001.26 for, that is revenue that he's received for selling scrap and things on gov deals. And then the HR background checks are actually appropriating revenues that we've received for, like vendor background checks that we get through planning and zoning, they kind of get filtered through HR because they have that connection with who does the background checks, and so we receive money from their permits, like, and then they're just asking for reappropriation of that.
That's number 50, right?
Yes, sir.
To clarify, the $10,001.26, that's money they, they have from scrap?
Sale of assets, yes.
And the, and the HR background checks?
That's revenue already received. It is budgeted in HR right now, currently, but they've had an increase in, in the amount of vendors who are getting those background checks, so this is in addition to that.
And they, not that you have this off the top of your head, but they didn't have it from anywhere else in their budget, the transfer.
Right.
Motion to approve 19OR50 on the first and second.
Motion second to pass 2019OR50 on the first and second reading, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed?
Aye.
Like a roll call, please? Sorry, I heard lots of voices.
I think it was just myself and Ron.
That's okay, we'll do the roll call.
Okay.
Aye.
Councilperson Paris?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilperson Maples?
Yes.
Councilperson Gill?
No.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Samuel?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
No.
Councilperson Allen?
Yes.
So that passed with seven to two. All right, attorney comments? You tell Mr. Waller we appreciate the pictures on Facebook of it, like, beautiful. Mr. White, do you want to say something?
Is that first and second reading?
Yes, it's first and second reading. Department heads, is there anyone here to speak regarding department heads? Seeing no one, there was no other public comment, so with that, go to council comments. Let, before we have council, though, I'll, I'll, I'll wait to the end for me to speak. So with that, council comments, Mr. White?
No comment.
Mr. Paris?
No comment.
Ms. Maples?
No comment.
Ms. Gill?
No comment.
Hawkins?
No.
Strongen?
Good.
Who else? Mr. Stagg? For real? For real? All right. Well, then I will speak for a second here. There was, I got an email and a text regarding resignations from a board, from planning and zoning board. Ms. Gill, Mr. Ellis resigned from planning and zoning. With that, so we need to make two appointments. We probably have time to do, wait till the next meeting, right, before your next planning zoning, or we could do it today if it's the.
Yeah, it's not, but we can do it tomorrow.
Okay. So with that, I'll just bring it up, that next meeting, we'll put on the agenda to go ahead and replace those two board members. That's the first thing you pointed, right?
Well, yes, so. Our, is the intent to put council people on there?
Yeah.
Hacked you by statute.
Yep, thank you. Vote, vote.
Technically, you're not a part of the order, so you all follow.
A what?
It's a part of the order.
Oh, no.
It's not created by part of the statute, it's right for the house to be announced.
So if you really want, really want to serve on that board, speak up, we'll catch you on there next time. And then I have one other comment, kind of changing subjects. This is a fantastic week and a good time of year because football season starts. Go Browns. Got that? Meeting's over.